Some plan sheets. I didn't want to put the whole four hundred eighty-four docu- page document in front of you like I did Jeff. I'm sparing them. Quiz for you is later. Uh, the estimated project cost for this is a little over five point four million dollars and this is eligible for a sixty forty cost share with the state water commission. So the local forty percent would be funded through the Department of Environmental Quality Drinking Water Fund, so. Uh, like I said, a motion to approve the plans and specs and then re- and then direct the auditor to advertise for bids.
So Jim, we've got three new council members. Why don't we expand on this a little bit and what we're doing here?
Okay, so the project is broken out into three phases. There are three areas, area A, B, and C. Area A is the area bounded by Wall Avenue down to Dakota Drive and the Cheyenne River to Nelson Drive. That is a complete reconstruct, remove and replace. Water mains, services, curb stops, gate valves, fire hydrants, and the fittings that go with it. There are certain areas where we have physical constraints going underneath trailer homes, going through really air- areas that are very tight. They're gonna be cured in place pipe. Those are gonna be, uh, the existing pipe is gonna be used as a host pipe for a cured in place resin impregnated liner to be installed through that. And services will be reinstated through a robot. But those areas, we've got some spots where, like I said, there's water main underneath trailer houses. There's water main that's put in very close proximity to, uh, physical structures that it just digging it up and replacing it isn't going to be feasible. We'd have to move some structures. So there's that area. Area B, which is third and fourth streets over here, uh, the mains in that are relatively new. They're plastic and can- plastic in type. That is gonna be adding curb stops, I mean replacing curb stops and adding or replacing gate valves. So right now, there's very limited operation of the system east of Nelson Drive due to the lack of gate valves. And what gate valves are there are in inopportune locations. So this will be, this project will install new gate valves to increase the operation of that area. Um, third street's been isolated due to water main breaks, fourth street's been isolated due to water main breaks. And unfortunately, being able to isolate just a half a block or a block hasn't been, it's been half the city. And at times, it's been the whole city. So by adding these valves, it'll be able to minimize the area that's affected and keep the entire system operational. Area C is extending the water system to Vista Industrial Edition, south on one hundredth Avenue and Canal seventeen. Right now, they are a bulk user to Casper Water Users. That is in the Horus proper, or Horus Water Service Territory. But there is no water mains down in that area. So in order to get water to that area, we became bulk users to the Casper Water. Uh, this project will extend the water main. It'll continue looping from Liberty Lane down to the Vista Edition. There's already mains and piping in that. And then we'll continue the loop back on the north side along the lagoons and back over to fourth street, continuing those loops. Cause there's two dead ends. One is at the end of Liberty Lane, the other's at the end of fourth street. So we'll create a continuous loop to get that back in. So those are the three areas of of this this project.
That makes sense guys, just so you understand what's gonna be going on here. This has been a long time coming and now that we're gonna get some state funding, hopefully, to help with this thing. You don't have to sit and do any special assessments for this stuff, so. That is a good thing. Alright, any any other questions with this? Otherwise, I'm gonna accept a motion to proceed with this.
You got enough time between the awarding the project contingent upon financing and then submitting it?
It's already into them. So what we would have, we, they require their information forty-five days prior to their meeting. So we took our estimate, submitted everything to them by the twenty-third of April. And as soon as we know our numbers and we're gonna go forward with it, we can get it to them on for that Tuesday meeting.
Okay, um, looking for a motion then to proceed on here. Jeff make some motion. Naomi does a second. Alright, all in favor say aye. Perfect, alright, motion carries. So yeah, let's keep our fingers crossed we make this thing happen, Jim. Alright, uh, on the twenty-two, Brenton.
Okay, this one is regards to water rates. No water rates, so, um.
Yep. Did you guys confirm the resolution to direct the auditor to advertise for bids as well as part of that motion?
Part of it, right?
You wanna address it in there? It was not included in the list there, but. If you want to.
Well, just just do another motion to then the resolution directing the auditor to advertise for bids.
I'll make a motion to, uh.
Okay, they have a resolution. Okay, Naomi does a second. Alright, it's all in favor, say aye. Alright, there you go Brenton, you got some more work for ya.
Yeah, I'm making notes here real quick.
Alright, okay. Go ahead, the twenty-two.
Now, now I have the fun one, water rates. As we, as city council, last year when they made decision to connect to Casper World, uh, they also took the path of wanting to have step increases, you know, phased increases. So instead of just doing rate shock all one time, going from what our water rates are to what is more similar to Casper World. They wanted to work our way up, have half, meet halfway and then go the next step once we're fully online. Uh, being the water projects what Jim just discussed, uh, doing those projects. We'd really hate to do a rate increase until we at least have construction activity. Acti- you know, folks are seeing progress being made towards improving the water quality. Uh, we will need to increase our rates to, in order to be able to cover any debt service for the city, uh, to be able to cover our costs. Casper World Water is more expensive. It is a lot more expensive than what our water is. Uh, to give you a comparison, Casper World customer pays a base around twenty-seven, twenty-eight dollars and the cost per thousand of five forty.
So people in the city don't pay the same rates for water?
No. Current, currently, currently, the city of Horus, our customers, they have some of the lowest rates. Not even just in the state, but in the country for water, when it comes to water. Uh, the co- the base rate right now is twelve dollars and the cost per thousand is one thousand. Um, what this rate increase was supposed to take effect, it was supposed to take effect June. So the July bill is when customers would see that. And it was to go from up a base of twelve, from a base of twelve to nineteen fifty and a cost of per thousand from three to four twenty. So that would get us halfway up to basically mirroring what Casper World is. The intention would be is to mirror the rate to Casper World. Uh, so that way, you're getting the same water. Horse residents throughout horse are getting the same water. Casper World Water is costing the same amount.
Okay, but the water that Horus residents have now is not Casper.
Is not Casper. It's not Casper. That's why we don't have the, that's why there's not the full rate increase or anything until we have that connection go live to Casper World. But having that rate increase, getting us closer to that. Right now, all we are covering is operations, very, very little maintenance. If we have one or two water leaks, we're lucky to be able to cover our costs there. Um, last year, for example, we barely broke even on our water utility. And we had a couple water leaks and our water tower froze. So we have to be able to cover our costs for operating the system and to cover maintenance. If we're going to go borrow money, for example, through SRF, any dollars through the state revolving loan fund for water improvements. Uh, we're gonna have to come up with matching dollars for, uh, these projects Jim just mentioned. The intentions are for the matching dollars to come from the utility, so you don't have to special assess them. That way, the users, if you're a higher water user, you're gonna pay a little more for the water. What that would do, it, but we have to have those rates established to be able to show that we're gonna be able to pay our debt to the state for those state revolving loan funds. So right now, we would not be able to show the state that we're able to cover additional loan dollars for the projects. Therefore, we have to increase our rates. These rate increases are already approved by city council before. We're asking to delay them by two months because the fir- that first rate increase. If you don't have construction happening before a rate increase happens. That's gonna be very hard for folks to understand, saying, yep, there's progress, cause they're not seeing actual shovel hit the ground. And that's the intention is to have, to show, yep, there's progress happening before any, any rate increase would happen. So we're asking just delay it by two months at this time. If the project takes longer to kick up, we're probably gonna come back to you and say, hey, let's delay it a little longer until the shovels hit the ground. If it does happen sooner, if the shovels could hit before, or the ground beforehand, we're not coming back, asking to move up the rate increase. Cause we wanna be able to communicate it to the residents about a month or two ahead of time, saying, hey, this is coming, here's what's going on. But like I said, all we're asking right now is to delay it by two months.
Is there anyone here that has a problem delaying a rate increase?
Well, that's what I was gonna ask real quick, if you want to make a motion.
If you wanna keep it, you can, but I don't think you'd want to, so.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Alright, motion carries. Alright, Jim.
Alright, in good DOT fashion, we'll go through the project south and north and west to east. So, starting on the south side of the city, we've got Maple Lake Estates. Maple Lake Estates, all the pipe work has been completed. They're working on preparing the roads and the fill right now. The completion for that project is in, uh, June, I think July. And they're still gonna have to work hard to get to that, I think. But they have been working out there. They have a crew of around ten guys. Oh, this one they started, this is the one they started last year. And then it got brought into this year and they started work out there three weeks ago, four weeks ago, something like that. So, um.
Did we get some resolve on that issue with the neighbor?
Yes, we met with Sue, or I called her, and it wasn't real nice the days that we were talking and rainy and windy and cold. So we decided we're going to meet out there, um, once things get a little bit further along and just see what damage was done. And then come forth with the course of that, as far as the reclamation of those, of those plantings in her backyard there, so.
Since we have the sheriff here, uh, there's been numerous occasions where we have, uh, side-by-side vehicles out there, uh, ATVs. They have now seeded or hydroseeded the ponds. If those get torn up, they're gonna have to do it again, delete construction. Um, I called the sheriff one time myself, uh, drove out there, um. What I'm getting at is it's happening around ten o'clock at night. I wanna make sure, for one, nothing gets stolen out there as well, okay? So you can see the, the side-by-side vehicle driving up and down, uh, coming out on our road. Then they, they cut across the farm field as well. That farm field, I believe, is not planted. So I did ask KPH to put up some trespassing signs to at least make it stick if you guys do find somebody out there. So please just be aware and, uh, thank you for finally pulling over the very first vehicle today on that road. Thank you. It was a welcome sight to see blue and red lights on that road. Uh, the retention ponds are on the north side of the development, uh, just on the south side of one hundredth Avenue. Um, but yeah, the vehicles were going up and down and jumping those last week. They are hydroseeded now, so it will cost the developer money after we do it.
South of sixteen, or fourteen, west of seventy-second street. Okay, uh, the Terra Gardens PUD, work continues on that. They're working on the underground. They're gonna be adding another crew. That's a private development just in the Terra Gardens Edition funded privately by the developer. Eighty-second, uh, street, the subgrade was prepped last week. Gonna haul in aggregate base and start paving on that this week. We're still working on some, uh, some, uh, work on the extension, on the Lakeview Drive extension, but that will be coming shortly. Um, they are, I believe, on schedule for an early completion, knock on wood, right now. Uh, Cup Creek Shared Use Path on sixty-third, that was started the placing of the concrete last week. They had a concrete pour on Friday, I believe it was, and we're a little bit left of that. And it'll be the grading and the base and stripping of the, I think they stripped forms today if I remember right from our staff meeting. And they'll be doing the grading and the base on that, so. Uh, Southdale Farms First Edition, uh, not a lot going on right now. They're waiting for electric, private utilities to get into the lift station. And then they can fire that up. Southdale Farms Third, um, the contractor already wants to have a pre-construction conference on Friday. I told him there was pretty good chances it was gonna be approved tonight, so they reached out six o'clock tonight and said if it went through, we wanna, we wanna set up a pre-con for Friday, so. Things are, things are moving on Southdale Farms Third, so. Uh, from the design, we have the Lakeview Edition plans. We've been going through those within, with Public Works, relaying comments. Like I said, we had those ready for you today for review. We'll have them again by the end of the week when you wanna meet. Terra Gardens Third Edition, we have received plans on those. There's some work being done on the ID agreement, so we haven't brought those forth yet. And we haven't got completely through them yet, so. Once Public Works goes through them, we'll get those comments back. I don't foresee anything out of the ordinary on the third edition. It's just a L-shaped continuation of Terra Gardens. Um, the connection to Casper World, we're working with Casper World to integrate the systems. We're working on the, uh, towers and how the towers are gonna communicate. We do have to have some discussions in the near future about what to do with the Horus Tower. Public Works informed me that it was inspected or reviewed last week and there's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of improvements that need to be made to that as far as the coatings and the mixer and some other stuff, so. We'll have to have a pretty serious discussion if that's worth, worth, um, putting into it or or not. A new one? So in the goal, the goal, the build out of Horus with full fire and everything is a million gallon tank. That's seventy-five thousand gallons. So we're looking at millions to build a new one. So.
With that potential cost share down the road.
And there's a potential for, for, uh, sharing with Casper World too.
Yep. Can we give away some advertising rights if they put their name on it?
Cities like to put their names on water towers.
Yeah.
I, I don't, I don't know, I don't know why that is, but.
Actually, it is for aircraft. There is a reason for it.
We tried, we tried to get our name on the other tower. Didn't pan out, so.
Brenton put a sticker on the base that says Horus, so.
Snuck in there about ten o'clock at night one night. Not on side-by-side.
Uh, Lost River Fifth, the change order work for the pond enhancements has been started. They started that late last week and hoping to get that done with a week, within a week or two. So, uh, that one will look pretty, be pretty close to being done here, I would say, within the next couple, two, three weeks, so. Other than that, we just keep pushing on with the other miscellaneous things that come up, so. That's all I have for you tonight.
Sounds good.
Thanks, Jim.
Alright, Brenton, you got twenty-four.
Okay, a couple updates I have. One is met with the owner of Big Earths, Kelly, Kelly Visto today. Uh, we're talking about a couple of events that they're looking at working with the city on, uh, around Bean Days. And then they're looking at doing another event in June, mid-June. I'll be bringing some additional information to council here, probably at their next, at his next regular meeting on that one. Uh, I know he's trying to work out some details on that right now, so. As for the really good news part of it though, in our discussion, I asked him about putting a fence up along the parking lot. Uh, there's a couple of details they're trying to work out, but he has, he is interested in, yes, putting a fence up along the parking lot. On the east side, so facing that property where we had coded enforcement issues at the last two council meetings, so.
Crap, really?
Yep. Now, his property does not extend all the way to center, but it would get to almost the dumpsters. It'd be about a fifty-foot long stretch. So, uh, we're, like I said, we're working out the details. Uh, I mean, this is the first discussion of that detail with him, but yes, he was very receptive to it. Uh, he said, yeah, I'd like, I wouldn't mind putting that up. Uh, we're looking at seeing, can he utilize any of that space behind the, that second, or the second bar building or not? Or is it best just to block it off or what? So we're working out those details together. Uh, but like I said, very good news. We're happy to hear that, uh, because that hopefully would help with the concerns expressed by the resident there. And also, uh, just keep some screening there.
Yep, in general.
Yep, it actually prob- I would assume it'd probably even help with any noise and things like that too, just cause it helps dampen it. Um, so anyways, positive news there, um, yes. This just came about today here, so I, I didn't even get a chance to talk with Barrett until mid-afternoon on it. So it was just, we were talking and I was, hey, there's opportunity to bring this up and threw it out there, so. Um, but he, he was willing to help out. He was willing to work with the resident there. He, he didn't have any issues on it before. He just wanted to, yes, let's work out a resolution. Uh, elements drainage, we are still working towards gaining that project moving forward. We are working on our capital improvements program, which is a basically a giant, or CIP. Which is a big old list of all the different improvements that we're looking at doing over the next couple of years. It's not going to address everything because we're, if I could tell you, every single project is gonna be needed. Five years out with the different things going on in the community, I'd better go buy a lotto ticket, so. Uh, but we are trying our best to identify the projects need that we see are there in need. Uh, there are going to be some prioritization efforts that need to be made. We may have to get creative with how we fund a project here or there. Uh, but that is in the works and that elements addition, drainage improvement is a co- is being a conform there. Also looking at drainage improvements in Dreamfields neighborhood, so. We, we've been trying to resolve some of those issues for many years and hopefully we'll be able to get something done this year, so. Um, the last thing I had, I do like to give you guys an update of building permit numbers where I can. Uh, building inspection staff, they indicated to me that they updated the spreadsheet or the chart today. Total new home permits issued at year to, or year to date is ninety-two. To give you a comparison, when we're talking just single-family homes, I just pulled up during the meeting here, West Fargo and Fargo. West Fargo is at seventy-nine. This is just single-family residential. Now, multi-family or twin homes, that's a whole different category. We don't have any twin homes that I know of right now. These are all single families. So we're at ninety-two, they're at seventy-nine, and Fargo is at fifty-eight, is what the report said. We also have total in the queue. I can look, I know Keith sent it to me here, but I'll double check to see if he said how many are in the queue. We have thirty-five new home maps pending still. So if you add that to that ninety-two, it gets you up there. Hundred twenty-eight is what we're at, total applied for, for new homes. As for total permits with new homes and everything, we are at a hundred twenty-four issued. With seventy-three total applications pending. That's remodels, decks, new homes, everything. So our building inspection staff is very busy. We are. It's about three to four. Yep. Yes, yes, we are. So yes, we, our staff is very busy. Uh, we did interviews for building inspector position last week. Uh, I'll be touching base. I know Councilman Johnson said in the, those interviews with me and, uh, Keith, one of our building inspectors. So I'll be touching base with them. I wanted to make sure he had the weekend just to think through, okay. Do any of them, do we feel like any of them really fit with our staff or not, or what route we should go? So I'll be touching base with them and we'll be making a decision on that one. As for our communication specialist position, uh, that one, we have found a kid, or a individual for that. Position has been offered to them and they accepted. Her name is Sally Showalter and she is gonna be starting on March, or, uh, apologize, May seventeenth. I know.
Back to the future.
So anyways, May seventeenth is her start date. I know she was able to make it to the events planning meeting with Chelsea and Naomi. Uh, and so I was happy to see that and I know Sally is very excited to be coming on board here, so. We're excited to be getting that position filled and like I said, we're working towards other ones to get taken care of. Finance director, I've been working with the, uh, Baker Tilly on that. They have given me their overall proposal. And we're working out the engagement letter for that, or engagement agreement on that. And we hope to have that, them developing the position profile and everything here within the next few weeks. Uh, that position, we're anticipating it's gonna be about August by the time we have somebody in that role, most likely. Uh, recruitment for that type position is not a overnight one. It takes quite a while. Uh, we've been communicating with Becky. I'll be talking with her some more about that, so. Uh, we do have, if Becky is not willing to do that, uh, then we still can work with A to S also. But we prefer to work with Becky as long as we can, uh, because of her familiarity with it and the efficiency of keep in mind, it's gonna be bare, bare bone from her, but. No, Barrett, you gonna do the finances now? So, uh, but anyways, I guess I just wanted to give you an update on those items, so. That's all I had.
Alright, on portfolio, let's see, the day after our last meeting, we took a trip to Bismarck. Uh, they had a workshop out there, the League of Cities did. Uh, myself, Brenton, and Naomi went. Uh, good meeting, you know, they had a bunch of different things. We took a little detour whenever the Capitol met with some legislators. I think that was a fruitful visit, um, helped us with some more, get them to more understanding of what situation we're in. Uh, fastest growing city in the state, we still are, uh, and we need some help with some of our infrastructure projects. And we did get some, uh, people willing to listen to us and hopefully we can capitalize on that a little bit more. And like I said, the workshops were good, a couple-day event, a good thing we went, so. That's about all I got. Sheriff?
Okay, since our last meeting, I managed to somehow come ahead in an election. I wanted to thank my counterpart. He, uh, he ran a good, fair, clean race. And I look forward to getting some of his input as we move forward here. Since the last meeting, I have been unbelievably busy with, um, not only meeting with private residents and working through some of their concerns and discussions, also planning and zoning, getting involved with the processes of planning and zoning and Public Works we have been involved with. So it has been, uh, no rest for the new girl. I will tell you that there are, uh, a couple of things I'd like to address here. Number one, um, accessory buildings. We have an ordinance that is far short of what it needs to be for larger lots. Um, getting a lot of feedback from a lot of different people that would like to put up accessory buildings. Something beyond just a standard little shed and they've got a little bit of acreage, you know? One acre, two acre, five acres, seven acres, eight acres. The current ordinance, as I read it, um, limits them to the size of a building that they can put up. And I have no issues with a, a reasonable provision. Um, but right now, what we have there is not reasonable. So I would like to ask to direct the Planning and Zoning Commission to take another look at that ordinance. Um, and make sure that we are on the right path for that. Um, also, I think tonight was a really, really good example of what happens when we look at the possibility of trying to put high-density residential next to RE or R-one style lots. I feel very, very strongly that we could avoid this circumstance if we look at the possibility of modifying our ordinances to allow for some sort of transitioning or buffer zone. Something that we can go off of as a guideline moving forward, so that we don't have to encounter this again. We are gonna replay this situation over and over and over and over and over again if we don't do something about it. So I'm going to ask that we put that on the next agenda and that we also.
Can I comment on that? Um, you know, I think that is such a complex issue that's gonna take a lot of public input. I would actually recommend that we let our consultants do that and figure out where that middle ground is. It, that, that sounds like a very complex, uh, issue to tackle. And as long as we already have them on board and they're already starting the process, I think that should be probably the number one priority.
I agree with that. Um, what I don't wanna see is any new small. I agree with that, um, what I don't wanna see is any new small developments proposed next to large lot developments. Without any type of transitioning or buffering between now and then, period. I'm not gonna put up with what I saw tonight.
Well, what is the buffer though, I mean, by the time it got to us, it was a one-story with a fence. They're not even looking into their neighbor, you know, and it was a very tricky situation between what they have across the street and what they're, where they're at. So, to say you need a buffer, I mean, I think we need a little bit more, like what it, you know?
We need something, we need some common sense that goes with this, we can't put, and, and for that matter, throw this at the consultant too. Wanna take another look at that long-term map for our future land use, because that's a living document. And a lot of work went into that several years ago.
It can be changed though, I mean, but, but it's got, there's, you know, situations are gonna come up where it needs to be modified, we knew that.
For sure.
Right.
Because it's too much, there's too much churn and burn going on in town here.
There is.
So we know that.
I think we just need to stay on top of that, so I would ask that we also put that in front of the consultant.
Do we have what changing, what we could, because we're, the content's very impressive?
Yeah, but there's other, there's other parts that need changing too.
Yeah.
Say again?
Planning and zoning discussed changing some of it on the map.
For that specific location, or?
Right, and there was some other issues.
There are a couple of others.
Yeah, so we can change those other ones.
But this was already processed.
But we just can't change this one.
And as far as that plat goes, that's the plat that the developer presented, you know, it's not up to the city to design those plats. It's up for the Planning Commission and the City Council to have a debate and a discussion on that and, and that's what was done tonight and that's how the process is supposed to play out.
Yeah, I was gonna comment. I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's the decision that, you know, city staff rely on, Planning Commission and the City Council to let us know, if that's not what you guys are looking for, you're the governing body. That's, that's your decision, uh, that, that you have to make.
I. I don't know how much more of this I can tolerate because it just seems like there's zero common sense. Putting the absolute smallest lot that we have next to the absolute biggest lot that we have, you know?
Well, I was gonna comment too, you know, as staff, you know, what we look at is the, the policies that are in place, so. We have the comp plan, we have the future land use map and the zoning ordinance. Uh, I, I think, you know, if the future land use map and our comp plan isn't addressing that, you know, hopefully we can tackle that on the zoning ordinance. And to figure out where that middle ground is and, and what we can do about that.
What you're bringing up at that ordinance right there, um, it's left up to interpretation, okay? How it's negatively impacting, let's say, the larger lots next to it. And so, I, I, I get where the developers coming from, I get where the residents are coming from. Because I think it was left up to, too loosely, of an interpretation of what it really means, so, and I don't know how you correct that.
It got to the point where the developers gone back and forth over the course of, it sounded like several years. And he's so frustrated, he brought his attorney. Way to go. You know, I mean, come on, we need to get real here and understand that we're going to have this conflict, so let's put some common sense behind it. Um, other than that, I've had some really, really good discussions with some folks, I've gotten some absolutely amazing feedback. Um, still working on a number of open items, but I'm, uh, very much looking forward to getting back tomorrow and actually doing my job outside of City Council. Because City Council has taken over my life over this last week, so. But I appreciate all the help from everybody that I've gotten, thank you.
Okay, Naomi?
Um, we, Chelsea and I met the other night, um, with the, um, Bean Days meeting. Well, I guess it was more or less pretty much everything, but we focused on Bean Days. Um, and Sally was able to be there, so that was kinda nice. Um, I think we got some really good ground that we covered, um, that night. And we'll just keep checking away and I think we're gonna have monthly meetings just to kinda stay on track, so.
Okay, sounds good, any else? Chelsea, what you got?
Um, not much portfolio-wise above and beyond, but, um. Just to, since we're kinda hounding the staff tonight. Um, let's do some more, right? No, we had a lot of feedback tonight about communication, so, and I know you guys work very hard. So I wanna express how hard you guys work and how much you have on your plate. Um, but I think let's just take the feedback that we got tonight and implement some better strategies, is all. That's it.
Okay, Jeff?
Um, I don't have a whole lot, uh, I have, uh, received a lot of late-night reading from Jim, um.
Thank you, you like coffee.
Did you notice I'm drinking a lot?
I did notice.
Uh, you have no idea how much coffee I go through in a day, um. I touched on my request for you, uh, I, uh, for Lucas, um. I, I hope it's not unreasonable to ask that, just that, uh, we, we get the same amount of timeframe that a resident would get when they get one of those letters, uh, just so that we have time to prepare. Um, and other than that, I talked to the sheriff already. And that was about it, uh, I don't have a whole lot besides, uh, special assessment policy meeting is Wednesday this week? We're good? You gonna be there?
Yeah, it's this week, I'll be there. Uh, just to touch on, on the, the policies, the communication stuff, that comes from the council, so if you guys want communication, you want a new policy, let us know. You know, that's, again, you're the governing body, you, you tell us what you want us to do, uh, and, and we'll certainly do that. Um, again, that comes from the council to give us that direction, so if you want additional communication, let us know what you wanna work with. And, and, you know, we're city staff, we're here to represent the, the city council, so just let us know.
I don't think it would hurt to have a meeting too, just to kinda discuss it, you know, what you're looking at and generate some ideas.
We need a little more time than we do.
We do, we can do better and I think we can give some input on that, there's several of us that, I, I think all of us here actually would have some really good input on that. So thank you for letting us know that we can change that, because that's something I think that we need to change. I think we would like to change it, make it better.
Yeah, it's a continued work in progress, I mean, we're, you guys have a lot that you're working through. So we'll just continue to work, do our best, and I think that's what everybody's doing here, everybody's trying to do their best job.
Yep.
A lot of this, I know the cities, is new to the city too, this much growth, it's overwhelming and so. Trying to understand that and trying to balance it and trying to find where we need to be.
Yep.
I wanna be excited about the growth in Horus again, I don't want people bickering and fighting, I wanna be really super pumped about what we're doing. And what we're bringing in and how we're gonna do it and letting people know what's coming, like, that's what we need.
It's easier to be tran- more transparent and it's easier to like, be able to have conversations when we're kind of.
Everybody's on the same page and everybody gets what's coming.
Yeah, there's always gonna be bad with the good and good with the bad, you know? And as long as we're willing to work through it and have these conversations, we'll continue to do the, do a good job.
Yes.
Yep, alright, so with that, I'm gonna ask for somebody to do a, uh, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Jeff, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, we are adjourned. We're gonna start setting records here.
I had it written down and I came across, and I'm like, oh, son of a, and I'm gonna, and I'm gonna see him tonight. So I'm like, I can get that done.